And so far this year, they have made blankets for the homeless shelter, scarves for the residents at Meadow Lodge. They made the Easter eggs for the egg hunt. They've prepared cards for our soldiers. And most important, maybe, they washed desks in classrooms and the doorknobs at the middle school to help the custodians out so that the building could be nice and clean and fresh when people came in to school. So I would like to introduce the members that we have here tonight. First, we have Erin Collins, Megan Condon, Alexis Render, Remy Slaybank, and I said it right, Emily Tackeberry, and Nicole Gore. And we also have the advisors that work with this group at the middle school. We have Mrs. Charlene Plagans. We have Mrs. Chris Nolan. And we have Ms. Sherry Bressel. And we would like to thank those advisors for the hard work that they do with these kids. We appreciate it very much. So at this time, if everyone could please stand. The flag's back here, guys. There it is. So whenever you're ready, we're ready.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Turn around so everyone can see you again. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, next, we have our mission statement. Bridget?
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education and empower students to be successful in a global community. Andy?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
Diane?
Here.
Tracy?
Here.
Jess?
Here.
And Margaret?
I'm here. Thank you. Next is a motion to approve the agenda. We have one addition this evening, a new number 11, which will be an action item, the robotics world competition in St. Louis. So that would be closed session 12 and adjournment 13.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is our portion of our meeting, which is our true blue moment. We'll start with the Lee Elementary School. Mr. Walmsley?
Thank you. Reading the report tonight for Mrs. Dowker. Tomorrow, we have parent-teacher conferences at the elementary school from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. Wednesday is a half-day upcoming. We have the Lego Club, which is their last meeting coming up this Friday, the 17th. On the 20th, the students will have an assembly or presentation of all second graders, excuse me, entitled Germs from Macomb County Health Department. On the 22nd, Earth Day, the Lee Elementary School PTO is sending pine tree seedlings home with students. There'll be a flyer going home on that soon. And on the 23rd is Fun Pitcher Day, so it's an opportunity to have some usual pitchers.
Very good.
That's it for the elementary.
Thank you. Middle school, Mr. Bartels?
Thank you. Today, we started the M-Step state testing, and we've had a successful start, very encouraging. National Junior Honor Society will be inducting the current 7th grade class for all of their work for next year on May 14th. Slight change as we're moving it to the high school auditorium because the National Honor Society of last year want to take more part into presenting it to the new and upcomers in the 7th grade class. And we have 50 students that currently are qualified through the application process. So we're just running out of room at the middle school to house everybody, and that's excellent news. Richmond Middle School Choir and Band received a two several weeks ago at their competition. I was able to attend the choir at Stony Creek, and they sounded excellent. And they went and performed right after a couple Gross Point schools and that had hundreds of kids up there. We had around 50, and our kids did very well, and they just missed a one. So we're very proud of both our choir and band. Ms. Bulwark, Ms. May, and I have given four tours for families in the last three weeks to, and all four shadowing opportunities where they can shadow a student for half a day or day. And I'm happy to announce that all four have turned in course enrollment packets and course guides selections for next year's classes. We had, first time this year, we had a 5th grade music performance where our band and choir and our two directors, we had them set up in the gymnasium, we brought all the 5th graders down. And again, I applaud the dedication of the Richmond Middle School teaching staff for going to a seven-period day so we can have 6th grade band in those opportunities. And both Mrs. Shaq and Newman had the choirs and the bands perform, and then during the performance would explain, this is, you know, the percussion section, here's the flute section, explain a little bit about the instruments. Lasted about 45 minutes, just to expose our current 5th graders to it so that when they're making course selections shortly here, that they could get excited about wanting to be part of that. So this was the first year of an annual, we're going to do that every year, and they did an excellent job. We had our Super U Challenge with our Shine, it goes along with our Shine PBIS program, and it's about how to treat people and character building. But it split, we had a 5th and 6th grade show, and then the 7th and 8th grade show, and then it split the gym in half into two teams, and kids came up and got slimed, and it was all about team building and character and how you treat people. And about two 45-minute shows, it went over well. I met with, I want to say that there are freshman sports fundraiser committee, obviously Mrs. Akerly, who's here tonight, and Mrs. Christensen. I applaud them for their efforts and met with them to go over ideas and see what we could do at RMS to help support their efforts. This Wednesday is our PLC, Professional Development with Teachers. We'll be doing NWA data, M-Step, check-in, see how it's going, and a McCall update, the technology update. The two teachers we sent will be presenting an hour of everything they learned and how we can start using that with our interactive whiteboards that we got this year, the new ones this year. And lastly, this Thursday, we have three great, we have more than three, but three excellent teachers that were nominated by their staffs to be the representatives from Macomb County Teacher of the Year, and that banquet is this Thursday night and at the ISD, and that's always a good time. Thank you.
Ms. Mashan, the high school?
Good evening. The high school's been pretty busy. Richmond High School was certified as a heart-safe school for the 2014 through 2017. Want to thank my assistant principal, John Bordeaux, for working with our staff, and the Lennox EMS for providing training and practice drills. He was instrumental in bringing this program to Richmond High School. As of last month, Richmond High School has a new articulation agreement with Baker College in our accounting, marketing, and business management classes. Our students can receive college credit for these courses at Baker College. Three DECA stu-, three students from our DECA team went to the state conference. Christian Failia and Mackenzie Gaglius received a medal for being state finalist, and Mackenzie also received a medal for having one of the top scores on the written exam. We, too, started M-Step today. The juniors on the week before Easter had practice, and we tested out our technology to make sure everything worked. We started testing today, and everything went well. Our robotics team, which you're going to hear about later, competed at both the regional and state events over the break. We made it to the state quarterfinals, which qualifies our team for nationals at St. Louis, and you'll hear more about that. Our band, too, competed in the MSBOA District 16 Band Festival at Anchor Bay High School. The concert band was awarded a straight First Division rating from a panel of three judges in the Class C and earned a medal. This ensemble earned 15 out of the 20 possible As. Congratulations to Rochelle Rigoli, who participated in the MSBOA State Band Solo and Ensemble at Chippewa Valley High School. She earned a near-perfect score of a 97 out of 100 and also received a First Division. On Saturday, March 28th, Haley Fortuna, Cory Andrus, and Daniel Sugin performed at the MSVMA State Solo Ensemble at Avondale High School. All three students performed two solo selections and sight reading for an adjudicator. All three students earned a Division One rating. Both choirs performed at the MSVMA District Corral Festival hosted by Lake Orion. The concert choir and the women's corral both earned a Division Two rating on a scale of one to five, one being superior. Congratulations to all of our groups. We, too, would like to acknowledge the Teacher of the Year Award. This Thursday, Mr. Murphy received the Macomb County High School Teacher of the Year, and he will be honored Thursday night at the banquet. Thank you.
Student activities and athletics?
Hi, good evening. Good to see you all again. Spring sports are up and running. We got busy the couple of weeks before break, and as it is typically with spring sports, once you come to spring break, many of the coaches and student athletes get separated for a period of time, but they are back together. And like most spring sports, you take the field when you can. And so the girls' soccer team took the field today, lost a tough match against Imlae City, but they'll be back home again on Wednesday as they entertain Elmont. We'll have home events all week, and I don't want to run through the whole month, but tomorrow the baseball team, JV and Varsa, will be at home against Algonac. Wednesday, soccer's back at home. Thursday, the track, we have a big track meet here. Friday, baseball will be home again with Marine City. Saturday, freshman baseball will be at home. So many, many events coming up this year. I am pleased to announce that with some hard work from Coach Polars, the golf coach, myself meeting with the owner and the manager at Richmond Forest, we have been able to secure Richmond Forest as our home golf course. I know for a few years it has not been. I'm not sure really why. I guess there is some history there, but I'm very pleased. We met with them a few times, January, February, and really happy to be back at Richmond Forest, our neighbors here in town where I truly think we should be playing, and the coach feels strongly about that. I know the players are excited about that, so we're really happy to be back at Richmond Forest. Tennis, our girls' tennis program is really off and running. The kids are fantastic, the enthusiasm is there. As we all know, we don't have our own facility, and that's okay. We've been using the facilities at the Parks and Rec Department. And I've been working with them, building that relationship and working with them. The courts are very suitable for us to practice in, but over the last few winters, they've taken a toll on them, so hosting a tennis match is probably not in the cards for us this year. But we're working through that, thanks to the coaches and the players, their parents, and the other members of the BWAC. I would also like to congratulate all the members of the robotics team and their parents, their mentors, Mr. Rudbein. What an accomplishment for them, and I know you're going to get more information, and I'm probably going to take things that Mr. Rudbein's going to tell you, but to be in top 10% of the state, 350-some schools, that's impressive, something to celebrate, and very happy for them. I just found out today, our boys' bowling coach, Coach Essenmacher, was inducted, or will be inducted, in the Michigan High School Inner Scholastic Association Hall of Fame. So congratulations to Coach Essenmacher, that's an outstanding and well-deserved honor. I'd also like to mention the freshman sports fundraiser, the committee of Mrs. Akerly, Mrs. Schmidt, Mrs. Van Hove, Mrs. Christensen, Mrs. Bastian, and I would include Mr. Walmsley as well. We have met many times, we met again today, but the Cow Pie, Cow Chip Bingo event is scheduled for Sunday, May 17th. We've met many times, it's been a blast, all these ideas, the creativity, the things that they're planning to surround the main event, it's been a lot of fun to participate in. I'm looking forward to the event, looking forward to all the things that are going to happen surrounding it, things like a dunk tank, the cakewalk, the chalk sidewalk chalk event contest. I talked to our friends at Richmond Fire Department, they're going to have their ladder truck to give rides up and down, the historical truck to give rides around town. I'm forgetting a lot of things, but it's really going to be a blast, I'm really looking forward to it. So I thank many of the members of the community and for their support and their anticipated support, and certainly the members of the fundraising committee have put in countless hours already. And Mr. Akerly, Akerly, he has also been a huge, his creativity for the poster is really amazing. If you haven't seen the poster, it's really, really nice. So, all right, he's got it, that's good. So thank you, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. Yes, thank you.
Our final true blue moment tonight is being able to honor, we have two students who are 2015 National Scholastic Art Winners, which is a pretty huge accomplishment, and we're very proud of these two students. And so, Mrs. Mashan, I think you're going to come up and say a little something?
I'm actually going to introduce Mrs. Belt, who can give you all the details and where they're going and what they're going to do. It is rather exciting. I'm not sure in the history that I've been here that we've had any national winners. So this is really, really a big thing. So I'm just really going to turn it over to her and let her share everything with you.
Thank you. This is Lauren Maxmuke, and her painting is actually in another art show, but that's the piece that's up here. And her piece is a bicycle, and it's actually on a roadmap. And the way that it was done is that she actually drew everything but the bicycle. So she drew all the space around the bicycle, and then the bicycle appeared. So conceptually, it's a pretty fantastic piece, plus the fact that it's a bicycle on the roadmap is kind of, has a nice little twist to it. And then Jarrett Gill, this is his. This is the contour of the typewriter, and a contour drawing is, I think it took him two days or so, but it's basically one continuous line, and you kind of can't pick up your pencil. So you're really looking at your object like 90% of the time, I mean, obviously, it took him two class periods or so to do, but it's really a fun and wonderful piece, and again, conceptually, it's pretty unusual. There were over 300,000 works that were submitted, and these two were in the top 1% of the nation that got awards, which is really fantastic. And June 10th through the 13th, they'll have honors in New York City. They will each get a medal like this. They both won silver medals. And they will, on the Thursday night, the Empire State Building is lit up in gold for all the scholastic winners, which is very exciting. And then the next night, they get to go to Carnegie Hall to be recognized, where they will wear their medals and have just kind of a nice, wonderful show for them. And then we might take a couple extra days to do a little bit of sightseeing since we're there. So we know that it's going to be kind of an expensive trip, and we'll be having some meetings with the parents and so forth. One of the ideas that we're doing for fundraiser that we are starting, we talked a lot about before, but we're starting, we finally found the chair, is we're going to raffle off a charity chair, and it is a chair that we got donated, so it didn't cost us anything. And the two of them will paint it with some type of theme, and then we will raffle off tickets, and we're going to sell them to anybody and everyone. And then there'll be one lucky winner that will receive the painted, the hand-painted chair, and then the money will go towards, you know, paying for everything, anything, the flight and the hotel and so forth. So we have other ideas as well, we're just starting brainstorming on that, so we'll let you know. That's it.
All right, thank you. Don't go anywhere, please.
Jarrett, would you mind just bringing your painting, your picture down so that we can all see it up close? But we have certificate honoring you from the Board of Education. Good job. We're very envious of your talents.
Okay, next is our items of interest from members of the Board of Education. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share?
You on that art, artwork to talk about Friday? Seems like a good, a good little move in. In Richmond, 2015 is happening on Friday, this Friday, from 6:00 to 8:00, and there have been over 150 art pieces of artwork donated from the elementary, middle school, and high school art students, from students, and that has been a lovely gift that they have donated. This is a fundraiser for the Richmond Education Foundation. It's going to happen here in this building, and we were present the other day to hang those amazing pieces of artwork. So there's going to be a silent auction for those pieces. So come at 6:00. You can place a bid for any of those pieces that you're interested in. You can also hear some of our amazing students perform, musicians will be there, student musicians will be there to perform. And we have some local restaurants who are going to be here, so it's our version, Richmond School's version of the arts beats and eats idea. And it's going to be a great celebration. We have a magician coming, Jason Magic is going to be here, and he's going to perform in the auditorium. So it's, it's just going to be a really lovely, wonderful celebration of the arts and a celebration of all of our students' amazing talent. Thank you so much to the fine and performing arts educators that have been a part of planning and helping this all come together. At 8:00 on the auditorium stage, there will be the raffle drawing where the first prize is $1,500. If you haven't gotten your ticket for that, we have tickets here tonight, they are $20 apiece. Second prize is $500, and third prize is $200. So get your raffle ticket tonight or Friday night at the event. Starts at 6:00 again, so it's going to be a great time. Please come.
Anyone else? I just wanted to take a moment before we get to our public comments portion of our meeting to kind of explain exactly how public comments work here at our school board meetings. We talked a little bit as a board afterwards, and I really haven't done a very good job of explaining, when it comes to public comments, how it works, so I'm going to try to clear that up tonight. Our public comments portion of our meeting is a time where anyone in the audience who would like to come up and address the board can. You have three minutes to speak. There is a card up there where you can put your name and your telephone number. It is not a time for any back-and-forth discussion, if you will. While this is a public meeting, it is, our meeting is not a meeting of the public. So though there were people that were in attendance last month and had some questions and concerns, and it may have looked to those out in the audience that board members were just sitting here, doing nothing, not reacting, what have you, when in fact, that's really not the case. Part of, part of our responsibility as a board, when individuals come up, is to hear what they have to say, and we turn it over to our superintendent, who runs the school district, to look into concerns that come before the board. So you, you won't see, when you come up here to speak at public comments, you won't see us engaging back and forth with you, that's how our meetings run. So we just wanted to clarify that, and we also wanted to clarify that while it, it can be difficult, and it's nerve-wracking to come up here and talk in front of the board, we know that, it's nerve-wracking to speak up here as well sometimes. But we do have a time limit that is set, and that is three minutes, and in order to keep our meetings running more efficient, we are going to keep people to that three-minute time. Mrs. Smith is our board secretary, so that will be her responsibility to watch the clock for us, and so when the three minutes are up, your time will be up to speak. So just wanted to clarify that before we moved forward in the meeting tonight.
Presentations.
Yep. Next, our item is presentations, and we have the baseball team's overnight trip to Mount Pleasant, and I believe that, yes, there is Coach Evans walking up.
I knew what this was.
That's okay, we'll, we'll walk you through it. What it is that you will do, Mr. Evans, is to tell us what you're here for, what the purpose is of your trip, that sort of thing. We have all the paperwork that you turned in, just, just so that you know that, yes.
All right, well, what we're trying to do is some, to do what the good teams do, the restings, we're trying to go to play good talent. Mount Pleasant called us, and they have four, the four finalist teams that are playing in a tournament in Mount Pleasant, they asked us to come be a part of it, so that's what we're trying to do. I'm asking for your approval to go there and play. We are going to depart Saturday morning, parents will are going to drive with the appropriate forms filled out and presented prior to leaving. We are going to be leaving Saturday morning, playing in a doubleheader on Saturday, and then staying overnight in a hotel at the Soaring Eagle Water Park with the kids. We have fundraised enough money to pay for the expense, it's no expense to the school. We have booked rooms, we have already booked rooms at the Soaring Eagle Water Park. Kids will be chaperoned, just like they do at all of our state tournaments, four players to a room. Parents are also staying, but I'm asking them to stay on a different floor, so that there'll be four coaches from the district that'll be in attendance, that'll be staying overnight also. And we will just get up the next day and return to, return to the school district on Sunday.
Does anyone have any questions? I do. When you're talking in your form about the chaperones and anybody that's a chaperone, obviously, has gone through the I-Chap process and all of that, so that's nothing-
Correct.
-correct? Because they're, because they're coaches?
Yes, ma'am. And they all came to the meeting with Mr. Benoit earlier in the, in the spring.
Okay.
And we did play over Easter, I know that all the scores weren't in there while everybody was on break, we had five games. We didn't play as well as we wanted to, but we're slowly starting to improve. So I know I saw Mr. Walmsley every day, I know I didn't see everybody, but while most people were gone, we played or practiced every day.
Does anybody else?
My question was to you, I know that the district put together a meal-money situation for kids, and I was wondering if it would be appropriate- And I was wondering if it would be appropriate for me to you give them meal money, like when we go away to the state? I have meal, I have money in our program from what we fundraised for. I'm not sure how prior practice works when they go away like that. Can I, I know we've worked out a system for when we go to state tournament. Can I just use the same system and pay for it out of the baseball account? Or should I have the kids pay themselves, since we're going away? Or would you like to just send me an email and let me know how to handle that?
I, well, I guess I, yeah, because I'm not sure what-
Is it baseball an internal student activities account or?
Correct. It's an internal student account.
Your fundraised account.
Yeah, all of our money that we fundraised for is in that internal account. I would be happy to pay for that money and give receipts. Like, I was planning on taking them to, you know, Big Boys or Shoney's they have up there that I could get one receipt and turn that in for reimbursement.
I don't know why I can't do that.
We can, we can work with you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, just making sure-
We just need an itemized receipt is what really-
Correct. Just standard procedure.
Yep.
Normally, these requests come to us long before the season starts. Okay, go on.
It was done, it was talked about prior too, but there was a change in administration where we had started the process and maybe it did not make it all the way. As soon as the new person, we quickly remembered that this had to get done. I apologize for not getting it done sooner.
Okay.
But I was aware that it was, paperwork was already in the works, but it did not make it to the final destination.
Okay.
Because I was made aware of that pretty, as soon as this, because our schedule gets done in November or December. I think I booked this in December and I was told about that. And so, after the first year is when we were, we started the paperwork, but-
So, next year when you want to do it, you'll come-
Absolutely.
Much quicker.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Normally, this, this meeting, we have two meetings a month. First meeting is a presentation where you would present and then our next meeting that we would have at the end of the month, which is the 27th, would be when we would take action, okay? And your event, you're going on the, that Saturday, that, the Saturday of the end of that week, correct?
Yeah, March, May 2nd.
May 2nd?
May 2nd.
Okay. So, I don't know what anyone on the board feels, but I guess someone, do we want him to wait until the 27th? Or just, would someone like to make a motion so for this one time, we'll-
Make a motion, make a motion to approve the baseball overnight trip to Mount Pleasant as presented.
Support.
Is that you, Jeff?
Yep.
Okay, it has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming tonight. Next, public comment. Again, this is a portion of our meeting. If you would like to address the board, as she's running up, we just asked that you please state your name. And if there is a question that you would like to have answered, please leave your name and phone number on the card and Mr. Walensky will get back with you.
Hello, my name's Pat Akerly and I'm a parent of a student and a parent of a former student graduate, also a teacher at Lakeshore High School. And for the last five years, have been a program coordinator for Richmond Football. So, first, I just want to say thank you to the board for allowing us to do something proactive to save freshman sports instead of, over the years where people have had doubts of how that was going to happen. This Spring Fest event that the committee's been putting together is a real positive thing for the community. There's a lot of people involved. There's been nothing but good things come of it, the discussions, the kind of community feeling that it's creating. The event itself's going to be a blast. The cow chip bingo is, is a chance of a 20, the raffle tickets are $20 and you have a chance to win $2,500 in these cows. It's going to be so fun to watch if you get a chance to look at YouTube. They, they wander around the football field and when one of them leaves a present on your number, you win the money. It's, it's really a clever idea and it's a, it's a one-time event once a year. To solve the problem once and forever, how do we fund freshman sports? And it doesn't put the onus on one group. Football, we would have no problem funding our freshman football, but some sports aren't so lucky to have the amount of numbers we have and the fundraising support we have. So, I wanted to thank you guys for allowing that to move forward to be a really fun annual event. Tickets are available here, several people have them, see Mrs. Akerly. I think Ms. Fertah has some tickets available today as well. I'd like to thank Mr. Benoit, who has met tirelessly with the committee and they've put this together. A lot of people don't see the behind the scenes and I just think they all ought to be recognized for their efforts to, to help fund freshman sports. And hopefully, it'll be so successful, we can not only fund it, but we can start doing some really great things for our freshman students. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there's the flyer, just so everyone, if you haven't seen it.
So, you can plug your work?
Yes.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? No? Okay. We will move on to our consent agenda items. A motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda items.
A little closed session?
What?
Minutes for that?
Yes, somewhere we do. One moment.
Do you want me to go over the questions?
Sorry, Terry's not here tonight, so Bridgette and I are, yes. We're, we're doing the best we can here, is all we're going to say. Okay, now that we have those, a motion would be in order. Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? I know that I turned in some questions with regards to claims accounts and I believe Tracy did as well. I don't know if anyone else did, but Brian, if you have some answers for those?
Sure, there was some questions regarding check number 41, excuse me, 41412 for daily snow removal. This bill that we received is through the February 14, or services provided. Check number 41423 for Jay Pepper's Music and the check 41426 for Port Huron Music and check number 41561 for Mr. Finley. These are reimbursements for music that they've already used the allocation in the general fund account and now that are using the money that they fundraised. There is not a necessary line item for elementary music, so these would be coming out of the teacher supply there.
Wait.
That's all right.
Why isn't there a line item for elementary music?
It was never, when the original budget was built, it was a separate line item. Each teacher in the elementary school got, received an allocation at the beginning of the year.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to have to say no. That's not the case, because when we talked about, when we were doing the budget last year and we talked about these items going to general fund money and not activity accounts. The, the idea was supposed to be anything if-
For K-12?
Yeah, unless, am I right or wrong? Is that what?
I remember specific discussion about middle school.
High school, I don't know that I remember.
Elementary?
Elementary, but that's just my memory at this point.
Well, then let's mark that.
So, we have, we build this budget.
Okay.
Check number 41463 for Michigan Association of School Administrators is membership, it's a renewal of a membership. There is no late fees for it, it's just, it's a renewal of an annual membership.
So, we renew it in the middle of the year for this year?
It's the, the timing of it would, our invoice would go into sometime next school year two, is when we renew it.
But it says 1415 membership. That doesn't make sense.
The membership began this year under the previous superintendent. When I got the bill and everything switched over to me, it was later in the year, they kept sending us the stuff that we owed for the whole year. Typically, the memberships come out over the summer. In the change of superintendents, that bill did not come to me, I don't know where it went. So, once you-
So, we are paying it later?
We are. But there's no late fees to it, yes. There was questions regarding the building secretary subs for the PCMI. The subsecretary counts for high school and elementary school are currently under budget. Middle school is at budget amount and there is no budget that was for special education substitutes. So, when that person is out, I'm not filling as a, as a sub. Check number 41486 was a reimbursement for postage. It was paid through the softball internal account, she bought stamps.
Okay.
Check number 41488, the odd, it was a field trip. They went to go see The Little Mermaid. It was the ticket price, if you will, for the, the presentation. One of the other questions, no, I'll get that in a minute here. Check number 41504 was for reimbursement of supplies. And looking at the timing of that, what we think is there was a delay in getting the, the purchase card to the, to Mrs. Dowker. So, there wasn't a purchase card, so this individual purchased out of their own money to be reimbursed. They do have a purchasing card now.
Okay.
41517, these three teachers, those are the classroom allocations that were given. It depends on when they turn in their receipts or what time they're, what they're purchasing.
So, everyone got the, the 250 amount?
That's, that's my understanding. I don't know, now, let me, classroom teachers, I don't think the specials or itinerant staff got the same amount when it was allocated, but I'm, I'd have to look into that one. Excuse me. 41525 was a mileage reimbursement. There's two exact same amounts because they're charged to two different accounts. One is to a high school conference account, one is to a Title II account. So, we split the costs between those two. 41543 is a mileage account for the state competition to DECA, to Grand Rapids. 41547, Kelpus Systems, this is paid out of Title II funds. Half of this is a setup fee, the other half is an annual, beginning next year, actually this year, we're documenting the paperwork, but next year for the entire staff, staff will be able to log in electronically, their professional development, to keep an electronic record.
Okay.
That file then is used to report to the state annually. But what it does, it'll, this year particularly, we had an audit of one of the individuals who the state requested literally sign-in sheets and stuff from stuff that happened, Mr. Benoit, or Mr. Bartel, that was about two months ago, three months ago, that we did the audit for the teacher and it happened like two years ago, they wanted stuff. So, we had to go back. This would automate and put it all electronically, so we're not digging through. It's going to save a lot of expenses. 41550 is a mileage reimbursement for, there's several, there's conferences, there's meetings for principal groups, athletic state competitions that were, that she attended. 41565 is an assistant coach for the basketball. When we had the internal budgets and the finance committee review, that was listed as one of their, on their budgets. The question is, is this legal to do? Absolutely, we have to, the, the business office has to get a, all the tax information for that, that person, that person's issued then a 1099 at the end of the year for their taxes to claim that income on their taxes. The 41569, what we did on this one is we gave an advance with the clearing the advance with the itemized receipts that would be returned after the event. Ideally, we're trying to get the check made out right to the vendor, but sometimes that doesn't happen. So, this case, we provide an advance for that teacher so that they could pay for the expenses. The other questions I received was regarding the early college that was paid for. We have 13 students that we paid two semesters for, two students that we paid one semester for. Early college is the program, if you remember, that they are actually a five-year student and by the time they graduate at the end, they have also an associate's degree that is at no charge to them. The question regarding the odd, about the arrangements, when we get the bills for the utilities, we invoice them for the utilities. So, we are charged for any performances that our kids attend or our students attend. And then, the question regarding the, the payment for the assistant coach was also on there. I think, I think that's it. I think I got them all.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next, our robotics team, Mr. Rudebean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello? Thank you for allowing us to come here and present to you guys tonight. As many of you have already heard, Mr. Benoit and Ms. Mashan have already mentioned some of our success this year. We attended two district events this year, one in Troy, one in Waterford, Kettering. Both events we did very, very well at. We did win an award at both events. At Detroit event, we did go out on semifinals, didn't quite make it, but that's the farthest we've been as a team. That qualified us to go to the Michigan State competition, which Troy was over spring break, it was over Good Friday and Saturday. We just got back from Grand Rapids, from the state competition, late Saturday night, where again, we also did very well. There's 102 total teams there. We were chosen, not to bore you with details, but each, each, each one has three alliances. Each, each team has three teams competing as an alliance. There were 16 total alliances for the, what they call the octo finals. This is the largest it's been for the Michigan State finals. We were chosen by the number four alliance, which was, was huge. We basically, I don't want to say walked through, but we, we did very well in, in the octo finals, the round of 16. We were the second-place team going into the quarterfinals. Unfortunately, there's a couple mishaps with the robots, not ours, I don't want to blame Lady Blaine, but our drivers did, our drive team did an exceptional job and we did what we had to do and unfortunately, and again, things happen, they've happened throughout the entire thing, so no fault of theirs. But we didn't make it through, but it did qualify us for the world championships. And we did win an award at the state championship also. So, we, we won three awards this year. The one at the state finals was the judges' award, which is presented to the team that's not the top in any of the different categories they give awards to, but collectively is one of the best teams. And the judges awarded us that award. And we also did get the number one safety pit area, work area, what they call the pit for our team, out of 102 teams. So, kudos to the entire team, but for pit safety, which is obviously very important when you're talking about robots. That brings us to what we have in front of us. We are, and unfortunately, in four straight, in four small years, we did go to the, some of you remember, we did go to St. Louis four years ago in our first year as a rookie, as a rookie team. That was more for the awards aspect of it, winning the rookie all-star. This one has solely to do with the robot. And, and collectively, this has got to be the best robot we've built this, in four years. Other teams have mentioned it and, and through competition, it's, it's shown that. These kids and mentors, as you see a large gathering here, most of the team is here with the mentors, have, have literally put in hundreds and hundreds of hours into this robot, through the summer, through fundraising. It's, it's been a successful year all around, not only fundraising, everything else. And as some of you know, robotics is a very expensive thing to run. Luckily, this year, the state has, was supplied a grant to pay for not only the state championship if the team made it, but also the world's championship. So, our restoration has been paid for. So, that's a huge monkey off our back as, as far as the economic aspect of our, of our team. You have two things in front of you. I gave you the schedule for the world competition, which actually starts next week. And again, that's why we're, we're here on such short notice. And again, thank you for letting us come here. And then I also put together the proposed budget for the team on there. As you can see, it starts Wednesday. As you can see, it starts Wednesday, April 22nd next week, and it goes to Saturday, and as you can tell, each day is pretty loaded with a lot of activities. They're there, for the most part, on average from seven-ish, 7:30, to anywhere from 6:00 to 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock at night each day. And that's a typical robotics competition, just for those of you who don't know. It's very, very time consuming. I know some of us, myself included, am still recovering from the weekend. It was very busy, you know, obviously the drive home and everything else, but very intense and very, obviously gratifying too, for us to make it to worlds. This year, in St. Louis again, they've bumped up the numbers, last time, last couple years we've been, or we were there as a rookie, there's 400 teams, they bumped up to 600 teams this year. So 600 teams from across the world are gonna be there. There's approximately, and again, I didn't get an exact number, there's approximately 85 to 90 Michigan teams of that 600 that are going. Michigan also leads the world in number of teams. We have approximately 362? 357? Teams, which is about 100 more than what California has, which is the second place one. So, and we have more rookie teams this year in Michigan than the entire world had. So Michigan is building as far as the robotics competitions. You see, again, the proposed budget, we need to still determine how we're going to get there. I know Mr. Burkmeyer was working on trying to find us a charter bus, he's been able, unable to locate one. He's called many different companies, and they're all unavailable as far as for that timeframe. So we're still working on transportation down there. What I have provided with you is the hotel stay, and also the food, as proposed by Mr. Benoit, the information that I was given. As you see, each night, the two mentors is one room, and then the team members, we have 16 total, four rooms, there's four people staying in a room. And then the lunches and dinners for the team and the two mentors. Breakfast is usually provided by the hotel, we just eat in the hotel room, so we don't need any food monies for that expense. One thing I would like to ask from the board, and you see the total there at the bottom, what, again, predicted through Saturday night, again, depending on transportation, it goes till late Saturday as far as the awards ceremony, so most of us would probably leave, if we, depending on the transportation provided, leave Sunday morning. I didn't include that in there, because again, it's after the competition, if you see so fit to add that in there, that obviously would be greatly appreciated, but again, based on the transportation, we didn't know if we're gonna leave late Saturday night, if it's a bus or charter bus, we can sleep the night, which we did previously. And as some of you know, previously, we did take the bus with the fighting pie that I made a team. Unfortunately, there's no room for that this year. Obviously, our team's a lot larger, we only had six members, last time we had 16 now, plus our mentors have more than quadrupled in number, so unfortunately, there's just not enough room on the bus for us and them to head down there, so. One thing I would like to ask the board, again, for consideration, we do, the school does allow for the two mentors, which is one room. Again, we have eight mentors, it is kind of a special situation, it's not necessarily called coaches. I know most teams have one or two coaches, maybe three coaches here and there, for some of the bigger ones, like football and wrestling stuff. With eight mentors, it's needed, because there's so many different aspects to robotics. There's some of the people that deal solely mainly with the build aspect of it, there's the business aspect, there's the programming electrical aspect of it. So each of the mentors kind of take a singular role in kind of providing each part of that team with their expertise. So I would like to, it does get costly, I know this is a special occasion, most teams are not gonna spend this much time or this far away from home in a competition. This is the only Richmond team that does attend a national or world championship, so I would like to ask the board if we could maybe add on to the number of mentors that have rooms paid for. It is a very costly thing for a lot of these parents or mentors, which they all are, they're parents of people on the team, to absorb for all these nights, from Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, you're talking five nights, it's pretty expensive for one family to do that in addition to the food cost. And again, based on what we've done before, I'm not sure what the travel arrangements are going to be for the entire team. Except, we're still working out the details on that one, so again, I didn't put into budget, it's not what the school generally pays for, but I would like you to consider that for the parent's sake, again, because of the actual time that all these people put into this team. And again, it's all volunteers, and there's no monetary compensation for any of these parents or mentors. Obviously, besides myself, which is from the school, but with the, literally hundreds of hours they put in there throughout the entire year, I think it would be a nice gesture to, to, again, provide them with at least some compensation for a hotel or stay or food, or one or the other. Any questions?
Before we have questions, Brian, Mr. Wamsley just has something, we did not get, we usually get a little something from the superintendent in our packet, but because this happened real quick, so he's gonna speak to what he would normally give to us in writing.
First of all, I apologize to the board, I was lead today, and Mrs. Terry, my assistant, was only here half the day today, so coordinating that, so I had a motion to approve up to $5,000 for the robotics team to go to the world competition. As Mr. Ruben said, there's still uncertainty on the transportation, we've tried several charter buses to see if we can get some, we have not been successful with the companies we've called. So I do have, so that would be my recommendation, and then if, for some reason that we weren't successful, and they chose to drive, which I don't know, I don't, that those dollars could be reallocated up to that certain amount for the team.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Ruben? No?
I do have to say, you know, that these mentors and students give 110%, I was actually, several weeks ago, I was at my daughter's dance competition, and we stopped at Big Boy at Hall Road in Garfield at late one night, and I ran into them eating there, and they were, they were planning and strategizing over, I don't know if you had a sundae, but I had a sundae there, so, but it, a lot of hours went into that, and so I give them a lot of credit for what they do for mentoring the student, and they are committed to being, representing Richmond to the finest.
Absolutely, and I, on the Good Friday, I did go to the robotics competition that was in Troy, the morning session, I guess is what you would call it. Wow, it was very impressive, my husband and I, our first time experiencing that, and it truly is amazing what you guys do, your mentors, everything, and it is something to be proud of, Mr. Ruben and the students, and for our school and community. It's very cool, and I'm just saying, anybody, if you ever want to go, you need to go, it's crazy.
I would like to say something to the board.
Certainly, and this would be Brandon Potts.
I'm a senior on the team, I was one of, I'm one of the current, two existing kids on the team that started the team four years ago.
You're a founding member.
Yes.
Yes.
On behalf of the team, as far as making it to the world championship, being one of the two that are still on it that have experienced that, it's one of the things that drove us as young students to be as successful as we have been in our four years. I'm very sure if we probably didn't make it as far as we did our first year, we wouldn't have been as driven as we have been in the past four years. And it's something great for our young kids that we have, on the team we have six new kids, so it's something great for them to experience, being their first year, as far as getting them on that same driven path to be successful for their next four years. And as far as myself, it's really influenced me to where I'm gonna be heading in my future, as far as heading to college this fall, be attending Kettering University for my double major, Electrical and Mechanical Engineering, and I have received my first robotic scholarship. I will be the first recipient on our team for that, because they give away millions of dollars in scholarships a year. So I think for the board to consider is the experience it gives to the students are the future of the team.
Very well said, Brandon, thank you. And I know those of us that were on the board when you guys first came, we remember, and we remember how excited that you were, and how exciting it was to start this, and it really is kind of cool to see how it's gone, but one thing that I want to ask is that you come to a board meeting after and bring the robot, because you know, we really, we groove on the robot. Fabulous, because we would love for you to do that.
As he mentioned, we won awards throughout the season, just a quick mention of those awards, we won creativity at our first district event, which is in honor of the robots designed as far as the creative aspect the students had in designing the robot to be different from other robots. At our second event, we won the Innovation and Control Award, which celebrates a team that used innovative ways to control their robot and play the game, and then it states the judge's words.
Excellent. How about if you and your robotics team members maybe stand up so everybody can see you and your mentors that are here this evening as well? Well done. And thank you to the mentors and the parents that are out there, because it is, it is a lot of work, and it's a lot of time.
I just want to add, I hope if you did the motion of up to and not to exceed an amount, whoever allocates that money, my worry is on Saturday night, it's gonna be, the easiest way is to take the cheapest way out, everyone's gonna be exhausted, and then you gotta drive home, so we don't need an accident or something to, bad light on this, so just keep cognizant of either a driving plan, if we can't come up with a bus, but keep that in mind.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to comment, I know it's been kind of the fast practice of a local business to offer up their bus for state tournaments, and I hope maybe that was up for consideration for a national trip for you guys.
Maybe.
It's an idea, isn't it?
Yeah, so if anybody can make contact with them, see why it could be.
I think I see Mr. Wamsley writing, so maybe that would be a good idea.
How much of the robot that you guys are using today is kept the same parts from when you started, because I remember, you guys, some of the stuff gets destroyed, and then some of the stuff you're able to kind of recycle, is there still a lot of stuff that's still being used?
You mean repossessing?
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah.
Actually, this year, we decided to start from scratch.
Did you?
We didn't cannibalize anything on the previous robot. We did that for a purpose, we want to have robots that we can take in the community and show them.
Okay.
So we didn't want to dismantle last year's robot.
Oh, very good.
A lot of teams to that, a lot of teams have big corporate sponsors, so they build what's called a practice bot, so they have one that their drivers can drive at all times, because after six weeks of building, we have to bag it, you can't work on it anymore until just before the competition. Other teams actually build another one, identical duplicate of it, that their drivers can train with it, they can manipulate it, they can do whatever they want, they can change it, and then when it comes down to competition, they can make those changes to their original robot. We don't have that luxury.
And as far as the success, we got no driver practice going into competition this year, and we still made playoffs at all of our events.
Right, so kudos to our drive team.
Yeah, no kidding. I think we have a drive team member at the back there, it looks like. And one here too, okay? Very good.
The last I just want to point out is, Mr. Ruben and Ms. Mashan and I met probably about two, three weeks ago, we've, I've committed to them that they will have a spot here to build and work on there, because right now, they're working out of, a pole barn, so to have a spot in the school that the students can work right here and store the materials and so forth, that we're gonna coordinate that, so.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, there, Dean, I don't know, there's a sample motion there if you wanted to. Thank you, Mr. Ruben.
Thank you. I'd like the motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve up to $5,000 for the robotics team, 4130, to attend the world championship.
Support.
Is that Jeff?
Yep.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Good luck, team. Yes, absolutely. Okay, next is our closed session for purposes of the superintendent's evaluation. A motion would be in order?
So moved.
Was it Andy? It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. We'll just take a, maybe a five-minute break, and then, Mrs. Mashan, can we get into your conference room? Oh, it is.